All right, I have six o'clock, so at six o'clock, I'll just need a Saginaw City Council order. Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, please be seated. Item number two is the invocation, for that, our friend Pastor Dennis Hudson.
Let's pray. My gracious Father, we come this evening just humbled before you because of your greatness. The magnitude of who you are is astounding because, Father, you are capable of being in control of vast universes and yet also capable of being in our hearts. You love us in ways we don't even understand. You know more about us than we know about ourselves. For these reasons, Father, we come with grateful hearts, a God that cares so much that we don't have to really worry because you have our future in your hands. This evening, Father, this council is going to work, these people work for this city, and there's many things they have to do. And yet, Father, you are here to guide them, you're here to strengthen them and encourage them, you're here to give them wisdom, for this we're grateful. We do ask that you would bless them and lead them in all they do, in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, sir. Thank you, Reverend. Item number three is audience participation, that is covered on the screen. If there's an item you'd like to speak about, please fill out a card with the City Secretary. Silence all your devices, cell phones, whatever, please silence them so we can have a good meeting. I'd like to welcome any folks watching online, or should I say, I hope there's folks joining us online. If you are, please send us a note, let us know how the video and audio is. Thanks so much for joining us. Item number four is the consent agenda. Item A is action regarding minutes of March 5th. Item B is action regarding resolution 2019-05, continued participation with the Atma City Steering Committee. C is action regarding adoption ordinance 2019-05, authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed abandoning a 10-foot wide portion of a 15-foot utility easement under a building encroachment through CVS Investments LLC, Lot 1, Block 1, Fuller Edition. D is action regarding rejection of bids for Fairmount 15-inch sanitary sewer Phase 1 and authorized to rebid. And E is action regarding submittal of application for home investment partnership block grant home program and adoption of resolution in support of Resolution 2019-06. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Thank you, Valerie. Charlie, second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Those opposed are done. Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum, Mayor Protim Flori is out of town. Item number five is consideration and authorization of an individual project order with Kimley-Horn Associates for Knolls Avenue conceptual design. And for that, Public Works Director Rick Trice.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, this action is to begin some higher level due diligence on the Knolls Avenue project. During strategic work sessions last year, I believe, the public and the council both identified Knolls Avenue, street construction and drainage as a high priority. And so what this IPO intends to do is to, again, take that conceptualized to a higher level where we can get more firm cost estimates and more well-defined scope as we might enter into a future bond issuance. So we would recommend approval. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to try to answer those for you. I would like to point out also, just for clarification, this is not a contract to prepare bids and specifications for construction. Again, it's just to enhance due diligence to define the project better.
What would be the timing for this, if we approve it?
I have the engineer here who prepared the IPO, maybe she could respond to that.
I'm doing a survey, so I'll take a couple of weeks. There's different tasks in there, but the major tasks, so Task 1 and Task 2 would be done in a couple of months.
Till about a couple of months, we're thinking for the entire, this work order?
Well, there's some tasks in there that are only on optimization, like since we've enhanced landscaping, streetscaping type stuff, so that would take a little longer.
Okay, just trying to get an idea.
The base task, Task 2, which is designing a road main drainage, would be just a couple of months down the road.
Okay, couple of months. Okay, Council, any questions? Comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of comments and a question. Just, I want to make sure that the scope includes the current master thoroughfare plan projects, 7, 8, 9, and 10, which is all of the Knolls Road, roadway and drainage projects. It would encompass from Longhorn to Normandy, as I understand it?
That's correct.
Okay. And it looks like the CIP cost forecast for all four of those projects is $12 million 390, and that should include design cost, is that correct?
I believe so. I believe it should be, it should include both, unless it's not broken out separate in the CIP, I'm not sure. But again, this effort will define that cost better and we'll get a good handle also on design cost at the end of this exercise.
Yeah, sure, what I want to do is I want to get my bearings on a quarter million dollar investment that we're making here in just essentially a feasibility study, which would be part of the conceptual design, I see that as being important, but it's $255,000 that we're committed, we're committing to a conceptual design.
We are committing, and, well, not necessarily committing, certainly the council would be a party to approving the scope as we develop it. This work is not a throwaway, however, I mean, work such as survey and definition of right-of-way parcels, et cetera, is information that's useful or would be used in the actual design process also, so it's not a wasted effort, I would say.
I'd say, just an acid test that I would throw at it is, the $12 million figure, the design services for that would be between 7 and 8 percent total. You break that down, we're only paying 25 percent of that 8 percent total, so that's reasonable for what I would say conceptual design services. But are we really going to be able to implement and utilize all of this information we're collecting for furthering the design, once we move to that step?
Depends, especially on the optional task. I mean, if, for example, one of the tasks is to evaluate roundabouts and also some streetscape enhancements, those are above and beyond, say, just, you know, a basic delivery of a city street or arterial, so, you know, if the council decides that those are elements that we want to include in the future project, then those are decisions that would affect the budget, obviously. And then also, there's one other task, I mean, you know, a good portion, the component of this study is the actual drainage work. I mean, we have drainage issues on Knolls, everyone's aware of, but in addition to that, we're also looking at some possible enhancements in the park in terms of a pond, if it has benefits to drainage, that's what this work will also look at, be able to answer that question. So that would be a win-win if we're able to develop that into an enhancement in the park, but also have drainage benefit.
Sure, sure, just one last question. The $12 million figure, I'm not sure if that includes escalation, and can we double-check that? I don't think that you're going to know that offhand here in this room, but if you guys could circle back with me and let me know how we're budgeting for escalation of that $12 million 390. It looks like in the footnotes of the CIP printout, I have the latest CIP printout, doesn't indicate that escalation's in that number.
Well, as we go through this exercise, certainly we'll develop a new cost estimate that will be current, and then depending on how that's funded, whether it's a bond issue, it's later this year or next year, we can put the appropriate number of contingencies on that estimate to account for inflation and other unknowns.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can you, Rick, can you quickly speak to the drainage issues? You glossed over that, I think that's a huge part of this, just the importance of the drainage, not only on Knolls, but those streets to the east of Knolls that flood, can you speak to that?
Yes, sir, there are a number of cul-de-sacs on the east side of Knolls that experience high water, at least over the thresholds of vehicles on a fairly frequent basis, and because they have no place to drain today, there's a backwater condition that exists on Knolls that backs up into those cul-de-sacs, and so they can't drain, so this will provide an adequate outfall, hopefully, for that situation. I would anticipate that we would have the drainage system in some cases extend eastward into those neighborhoods to help serve those drainage problems, so, but we'll get a better handle on that as we go into the analysis.
Great, thank you. That's why I feel Knolls is such a high priority for us. Once I fully understood how bad that was, I didn't realize until you all drove me around how bad that drainage issues are on there, so I think that moves Knolls certain to the top of our list. A couple of questions on, so talking about funds, and I don't know if this is Gabe or Kim would answer this about, so funds available, so $116,000 from the street maintenance fund and $138,000 from the drainage fund, right, so that's, what was that money allocated for originally in the budget?
It would come from the balance in those funds, it wasn't, it's not allocated for something and being reallocated for this.
I don't know what the answer was, just wanted to make sure, thank you. Counsel, any other questions?
I want to also point out, I don't know if you received a final draft copy, what was posted was a draft copy, so there had been some minor edits in terms of just style edits, if you will, and boilerplate, there's no substantive changes to scope fee in the IPO, so just wanted to point that out also. But you have the revised and effective copy tonight.
Can you answer me one question, though? Can you answer me why we have to do another survey and right-of-way research, shouldn't we already have that?
We don't have survey along the, along those.
Oh, really?
That I'm aware of.
Not an actual, yeah, City William's House from parcel labor, not actual research.
Counsel, any other questions, discussions? Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the IPO as presented and as recently modified and given to the council.
Yes, I second.
Valerie, second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Are those opposed? Thank you, thank you, Rick, thank you, Dana. All right, moving on, item number six at 6:12, recess into workshop. So seven is discussion regarding facility needs assessment.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, my name is Jeff Bulla, I'm a principal with PGAL Architects, and we're just here to give you kind of an interim progress report on the needs assessment we've been doing for several of the city facilities and kind of preliminary conceptual design for the idea of creating a town center. So we've got a lot of data to throw at you tonight, feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions. I'm going to go pretty quick because there's a lot of information here, I'll be happy to stop, or we can come back. So you can see before you kind of the agenda items to review kind of what our project's scope was, what our findings were for the needs assessment, what the proposed priorities and recommendations are, and some preliminary cost estimates for the first three of those priorities, and then just to discuss with you what your thoughts are on next steps. So you see before you, our scope was kind of twofold, one was to do preliminary needs assessment for certain city facilities, including the central fire station, public library, all departments of the city hall, public works, which was just limited to the departments, the administrative departments that service, customer service functions, to look at the senior recreation center, and then also the police station, and at the time, the thinking was that that was just going to be limited to parking and a training room. So it does not include any look at the animal care and control facility, or the rec center, or the aquatics center, per se. And then the second part of a scope, once that was defined, is to start looking at a way to kind of create a conceptual master plan, looking at different options to show you how you could serve those needs, and both of these are looking at the needs through the build-out of the city, in terms of population, the idea of creating a town center master plan for the McLaRoe corridor, and then, again, looking at some probable costs for initial projects. So if we move now to what those findings are, I think we've met with just about every staff member in this room, certainly all the department heads, Gabe, Dolph, and many others, and really just trying to go through the needs assessment to determine just what they see in terms of staffing and other spaces that it would take to serve the city through the build-outs. So the population now, I believe, is where we're right around 23,000-ish, and so the assumed number was to see what it would take to build out to 30,000. When that occurs, is anybody's guess, that could probably be 20-plus years, but maybe around 20, 40, just based on projections. And so we have a questionnaire that we go through with each department, it's kind of a 12-question approach, and then we look at establishing standards for the various office sizes, and so we did, you know, kind of all of that with all the departments that I mentioned. We looked first with the central fire station, with Chief Spears, and just what their needs are, obviously, there's some pretty small type there on the screen, there's a lot of departments, a lot of numbers there, but we're projecting that they need a facility of just over 25,000 square feet. I believe the current facility is 16,000, just over 16, right? So that's what we are projecting, based on a lot of discussions really with Chief Spears. Then we looked at this facility.
I'm sorry, can you go back to City Hall, to the fire station, real quick?
Certainly.
I had a question for Chief. Chief Spears, could you speak to, you know, your current situation, as you are on the main boulevard, could you speak to the disadvantages about that and what we would be looking for?
As far as the safety?
That will be part of this presentation later, if you want to go there, or if you want to...
Coming up, we don't have to address it, I'm just...
It is, and didn't mean to interrupt, but it is sequentially part of what we're going to take you through.
Great.
If that's okay?
Go ahead.
Okay. We'll move on to the idea of looking at the city hall, and so basically, this is a summary of all of the departments that are in the city hall, but it also includes a public works administration, and I've got a sheet following this slide for each one of these that breaks these square footages down. And so what you can see is, in essence, just under 16,000 square feet. The building we're in right here is 8,000 square feet, so you can see that we need twice this space, and so we're going to tell you how you can achieve that, we think, in a very prudent manner here before we finish this. So again, if we break this down, as you can see, that's the city administration, you can see that they need 1,323 square feet, economic development at 431, human resources, we're projecting at 390, finance at 1,750, IT at 560, and public works administration at 2,956. So it's a large square footage of that additional 8,000 that we need in here, 3,000 of it is actually coming in from the public works department. And then the council court space would have, is a larger, is a need for a larger square footage and some accessory functions, and then...
What do we have now in the council? What is this square footage?
It's not that much, but what, does anybody know?
I don't have that information right here in front of me, I don't think it's on this slide at all.
Fine, we don't need it right now, just...
My recollection is this is about a 50 percent increase in the size of the entire sheet there, in other words, all the functions are on the sheet, not just this room. And I think that you can, if you're interested, it does state on there what the capacity is that we're trying to get to, and I'm sorry with the screen over at the side, I'm going to have to slide over to be able to read that.
It says up there, county court, council, right?
It's 1,400, it's on, you're right. Yeah, there it is, it's on there, 1,600 is the square footage for that whole sheet, so we are more than doubling the square footage for, just barely more than doubling what it would take, so.
Okay, so, and then there are just certain support functions in the building, as you can see, various things, excuse me. And that's 3,668 square feet. So then we looked at the public library, we did a pretty in-depth analysis on what the library would need to be, there's several sheets here, so I'm just going to kind of go through these, as I said, there's a lot of data about what would be needed. And so the library currently is 10,000 square feet, and it really needs to be about 29,000 square feet. Now, that could range 25,000 to 30,000 in that range, but this is based on kind of breaking down specifically room by room, space by space, office by office, the collection and everything as to what would be needed. A good roll of thumb for a city of your size is about a square foot per capita, so this came in pretty close to where we would have guessed it would have. And then if we look at the log cabin or the senior citizen recreation center, I believe it's just over 4,000 square feet, and if it was a standalone facility, we were projecting, based on the needs that they've described, and the spaces they'd like to have, a facility of about 14,000 square feet. So again, we're looking at how do you serve the long-term needs of this city for the build-out population. Some of these needs are certainly felt needs right now, and others, you know, are long-term. So if we look at that in conversations that we've had with the city manager and other staff members, and trying to establish some priorities to bring to you and some recommendations, the first priority that is proposed is to build the central fire, a new central fire station. And I've got a slide for each one of these that I'll talk to you a little bit more about each one of these priorities and why they're ordered this way, too. So priority number two was to build a new public library. Staff asked us to include on this that it would be recommended for a November 2019 bond election proposition for the library. Number three, to renovate the city hall, and here's where it gets interesting, in the existing library, to create an enlarged city hall, and I'll show you that in just a second. That would, again, include the public works administration. And then a fourth priority, and perhaps that priority is, could be done in conjunction with any of this, but the idea of redeveloping McLaRoe to create an enhanced experience and a connect, something that connect, to connect the park to the school and to Saginaw Boulevard, and just so that it could become a more dynamic pedestrian-friendly space and street, excuse me, back up. And then number five, to build a new senior center, we're proposing that that be done as an addition to the recreation center, so that would be co-located facilities, and I think the staff and the manager of the senior center, everybody's on board with this idea, as is the recreation director, manager, just from the sense of the synergy it would create, and it would save some square footage as opposed to it being standalone. And then sixth, there's a need for additional parking and expansion of the police station at some point. So if we break these down a little bit, this is an aerial view that kind of shows those 12, excuse me, those 12, those six priorities, as you can see up in the right-hand corner, priority one and two would be to build the new central fire station, the new library, and that could be somewhere, there's certainly vacant land, there's land for sale along McLaRoe, but we think it would be very good to bring both of these facilities into this corridor, into the McLaRoe corridor. And then you can see, if you look at the city hall there that's in green, you'll see what we're proposing is to basically make a connection between this building and the library, some type of a maybe glass box, some type of a common area, maybe it's a break room, but some type of a connection that would be an air-conditioned enclosed space, maybe 1,000 square feet, that would connect the two facilities, and then they would, both of these facilities would become the newly redesigned city hall, and these two facilities, this being 8,000 and that 10,000, provides 18,000 square feet versus the 16,000-ish square feet that we were projecting was needed, so it would have actually some extra capacity into this. And then you can see the idea of a new parking lot there for the police, and then maybe someday down the road, a new wing or possible other ways to expand the police facility, and then further down in the aerial shot, you can see the proposed kind of area where there's room to build a senior center, and it could have its own independent entrance on the east side of the building off of the parking lot. So let's talk about the fire station. The existing fire station, we do not believe is viable to renovate or expand. It's built in two parts, in 1966 and 1974, maintenance is an ongoing challenge, it's really not up to any kind of standards for a building of today's expectations. 16,000 square feet, as noted before, is not large enough, and we just don't believe that putting money into that building is prudent at all from the standpoint of use of the taxpayers' dollars. And that site, as well as the inclusion of the log cabin there, that site is probably a higher and better use for economic reasons for the city. So our recommendation is to build a new approximately 25,000 square foot central station along McLaRoe Boulevard. So now I'll throw it over to Chief Spears to answer the question, but that is a segue.
Mayor, do you want me to speak specifically to the safety of the location that we're at now?
Anything and everything you can add to help us out.
I've got a lot, but I'll try to keep it brief.
Go for it.
But of course, being on a state highway and us exiting out on the highway to run to a call is not ideal for any type of fire station. At any particular time of the day, traffic's traveling up to 60 miles an hour, a lot of those semis, stuff like that, so pulling out of the station immediately when somebody sees lights, they're slim on their brakes. So we have had some accidents there, fortunately, none of them have been too terribly bad, we've been involved in a couple of them, but every time we pull out of the station, I'm paying attention and I cringe that we're going to have another accident there at some time, and hopefully nobody's injured, so it's just not an ideal situation, the location where we exit out on the freeway. A flooding issue, I believe everybody's aware of, Kimley-Horn did a geotechnical study, an assessment of the site there, the best they could do as far as keeping us there is spend 180,000 for something that would help alleviate the flooding, but it wasn't guaranteed to fix it. It was just a best guesstimate. With the state highway there, there's just no way to remedy that issue. Outside of rebuilding the whole facility on that location, then we go back to, is that an ideal site for the fire station? Those are the two primary drivers. We've outgrown the facility to some extent, rebuilding on the site, there's a lot of utilities there that would cause some problems, there's a sanitary sewer that runs behind the building, so just expanding it back to the west a little bit causes some problems, and that with the overhead power lines. The foundation of the entire building has some problems, we have some plumbing problems inside the building, inside the slab, that we're just trying to get by till we decide what path we're going to take. Those are the primary drivers of moving the fire station to a different location, rebuilding, whatever the decision is.
Can you address the response time from it being on McLaRoe?
We're really limited to being on McLaRoe or staying in the area we're at, we've got to look for available land opportunities. Those are present on McLaRoe, I've driven the city and looked as far as fire station response, there's really no other place we could go to keep our response times within what we try to meet. So time kind of gets of the essence, too, with the available land opportunities down McLaRoe Boulevard, at some point, those are obviously going to be gone, so that's another thing to consider when we're talking about these things.
Could you remind everybody of the flooding issues you have, and just specifically where the flooding is, and how much and how bad?
The flooding issues are in the, unfortunately, in the living quarters of the fire station, just this last little rainstorm, we had some water come in the building, so we bought our own carpet suction fans and suction units to keep the water up. We've had, at the couple of the worst cases, the guys have gotten out of bed and been standing in water that's two or three inches, this is in the middle of the night, so usually it's during a storm event, they've got to go out and handle whatever emergencies there are, sometimes those are many hours during a storm, and we've got to come back and clean all that up, so it's not much fun when you step out and all your clothes are wet, all of that, it's not something you'd want to put anybody through, much less your people that are sent out to help everybody else. So we could have a year where it doesn't flood any, we've had it flood as many as 10 or 15 times in one year, it really depends on the annual rainfall, but it does flood on a regular occurrence. I would say since I've been there, it's probably in the realm of 40, 50 times, with many of those being pretty drastic.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, if we move on to the priority two, the John Ed Keeter Library has 10,000 square feet, as we noted, we're projecting that you need 25,000 to 30,000, 30,000 would be ideal. Uh, 30,000 would be ideal, uh, range. So, our recommendation is to build a new 30,000-square-foot public library along McLaRoe Boulevard at, at some point, at some location. We have had some discussions with city manager about locations, but we won't be discussing that here tonight about where we think would be good locations. Number three, um, as, as noted, we're looking for a minimum size of 16,000 square feet for the city hall. The building we're in is eight, the library is 10. That gives, uh, 18,000 square feet for city hall functions, uh, as I mentioned before. Um, if we connect the two construct, these two structures so that it is, um, can, can form, uh, effectively together as a unit, and we're not looking for a lot of square footage, a thousand square feet or something like that. Um, we think that it could actually enhance the space between the buildings, if maybe there's some type of landscaped staff courtyard, or, or something along those lines. Um, and allow this to actually have some capacity for more than what we're projecting, which I think is, is probably a good thing, to have a little bit of extra growth. Priority four, um, just the idea that we, we believe that particularly with the, if, if a library is added to McLaRoe, uh, and, and we bring in additional public service functions here to the city hall from, uh, from Public Works, um, and even with the central fire station, we think that this really becomes quite the town center with all the facilities here. And so, our belief is that, um, McLaRoe Boulevard could really become a boulevard, but it, it, it could be developed as a kind of linear town center, and that it can, could connect from Saginaw Boulevard, or close thereof, to all the way down to the Willow Creek Park. And so, our thoughts would be that it would link all these facilities, it would also connect, uh, the Saginaw Elementary School, it could connect with the Development Center. So, we're thinking in terms of wider sidewalks with landscaping and, and parklets or small little, uh, isolated areas along the way. Um, perhaps no curbs, um, where actually the street could be closed at times for pedestrian events, and that the street would be separated with, um, different types of things, bollards, plant, uh, planters, that sort of thing, um, so that it could become a really, a truly an, an area to have an event. And there were, would be added parking along it, either parallel or angle, depending on where it is, perhaps a bike lane, and just enhance maybe in critical areas. And then, somewhere, I think we would be looking to develop, um, a plaza, or a gathering, a large, large gathering space that would be, you know, adjacent to, to that linear development. So, there's some images in here, you can see of just the potential. I don't know that you would ever necessarily have, um, the architecture of the buildings quite that dense or up to the street. There are certainly, certainly that possibility on some of the vacant land that you could have, a little bit more of an urban feel. But I do think you could have, um, a very nice pedestrian experience along there with the different buildings and, and, and a bike path. So, these are just, again, just some sketches that show some, some just different ideas in, in different places of how that could, could work with a bike lane, um, and just little parklets, little places to sit, um, and really just trying to create a center here for, for the town. Number five, priority, build a new senior center. Um, there is just a lot of, uh, agreement that it would be a great co-located function with the senior, with the recreation center. We think that could save 1,000 to 2,000 square feet over building it alone, standalone, if not, if, if not perhaps even more, depending on, um, how it would lay out. And so, um, the, the thought, again, I think I can go into it a little bit, but obviously the log cabin and the, the same issues on the site with the central fire station, it just would make a lot of sense to bring the senior citizens into this, into this area. Their use of the, of their facilities is more morning and early afternoon, maybe one night a week or something, and so it would be a, a really good fit with the recreation center, because the, um, the peak use for senior center would not be the peak use times of other users of the recreation center. And then, lastly, the police department, um, in meeting with them, they did identify some additional needs going forward. Some of those are sooner, some of them are later. Um, certainly, their need is for parking for both fleet and a little bit of public parking. Uh, they need a train room, which was not part of the original facility. It's possible if the central fire station is located nearby that they could share that or use the fire department's training room. Uh, they, they're needing in the next few years some locker room renovations and expansion, uh, community services office. Uh, they would like to have, um, enlarged property and evidence storage, a SWAT tactical room, armory, a larger, uh, better fitness area. And then, i- if indeed, fire dispatch ever did move back to the police dispatch responsibility, then that would need to add a console in there, and then, storage is always needed in any facility, right? So, our recommendation would be to build the additional 40, uh, spaced parking lot, which there's room for that, as we indicated on the drawing earlier, and then, uh, at some point, renovate the police facility and, and expand it for some of the functions that are in there, and there is room to the east. We did do a study to look to the east of the, um, police facility, which is actually in the lower right-hand corner of that image, is the eastern corner, the northeastern corner. Uh, just out of curiosity, to see if you could put a fire station there, and you could not, it wouldn't, it would not fit on there. So, we did look to see if there was a way to do that, but, but there isn't. So, if we look at some preliminary cost estimates, just for the first three items, um, so if we look at the central fire station, as you can see, uh, in the first line there, assuming a 25,000 square feet at $450 a square foot. So, um, I will tell you that, that $450 a square foot actually makes me nervous. In the last two or three days, I have heard of fire stations, uh, coming in at over $500 a square foot in Farmers Branch and, uh, I believe Grapevine. Uh, this construction is just kind of rampant right now in this, in the area, and the, there's a lot of escalation. But this is kind of looking at an, an entire project budget, um, not just the construction, I'm trying to give you an idea of what the magnitude of this would be. It doesn't include any thought of any land purchase, and if you were to, um, you know, build it, um, obviously, in the years to come, you, there, uh, definitely would need to be an escalation factor built into this, and that's what those footnotes indicate on the left-hand side of that slide.
What will be the land required for this?
Um, need to go break that down. We actually have, um, drawn a s- little site plan, um, and I think it's a couple of acres, but I, uh...
Two and a half.
Yeah.
I think it's three, three and a half, two and a half, and two is calculated.
Yeah, I was gonna say, two would be the minimum. I think we're on the same page. And then, uh, the library, uh, again, if we assume a 30,000 square foot, uh, at $425 a square foot, you can just see the breakdown of the various items there. I won't go into each and every one of those. Uh, same caveats, there's no, no, uh, land cost in here, and then you would have to include, uh, any escalation for whatever year you would project that that would be. And these are fairly real numbers. We do a lot of fire stations, we do a lot of libraries, so I, we, we are very, um, certain of the, where these costs are these days for, for projects. Big numbers, no doubt, it's...
I'm just surprised that the library is more expensive than the fire station.
Well, it's the square footage.
It's...
The, the library is, we're projecting it at 425 a square foot. Um, we had projected at the previous slide at 450 a square foot for the fire station. And, uh, just even in the last few days, I'm, I'm nervous that that's not even enough. So, um, just even literally talking to a fire chief today, uh, about a project, uh, and what, what some projects have just come in in the last week, so... And then, uh, if we look at a city hall renovation, um, the other two numbers are pretty, um, I guess I feel fair, fairly confident about the dollars per square foot for the fire station and the library. Um, feel confident about this, this, but it's more difficult to estimate, uh, the cost of renovating a facility. And so, um, this is our current kind of best thought on what it is. So, it's 16,000 square feet for the two, library and the city hall, if those were renovated. And, and I think that would be pretty substantial renovations. Right now, we, we're showing a number there at, um, is it 2, 225, I believe is what it would be, 225 a square foot. And then, there's a line item, second line item for new construction of 1,000 square feet at 400 bucks a square foot to connect the facilities. Again, that breaks down, um, and each, each one of these includes a 15% project contingency. Um, it, it's kind of the second to last line item is adding 15% to the subtotal. And so, there you can see is the almost 5.8 million dollars. So, these are certainly, um, large numbers, as I understand. So, that's kind of our presentation. We'll ha- be more than happy to go into any of it in any further detail, um, but we're, this is just an interim report to you of kind of where we're at. We've spent a lot of time with the staff over the last few months, really trying to break it into all the data and what they're projecting. It's based on, uh, staffing. All the numbers in all the facilities are based on the number of staff, um, well, particularly for the city hall and the fire department. And then, senior center, library, those things are based, you know, more on the space needs, but, uh, it's, it's not a guess, it's a pretty accurate.
City council questions?
Just, just a couple of questions with respect to priorities. Uh, did we align these priorities with our, uh, master strategic plan? I mean, was it aligned with that at all?
So, question one that we need direction from the council is what do we do with the fire station? The long-term option is not to stay there, right? The facility is not suitable for that use. We can get by for some amount of time. Uh, I think it's, that property's opportunity for redevelopment is far better benefit to the city. Uh, you know, once we get direction from the council on that point, I'd pitch it to y'all and say, if we wanna pursue a bond election, uh, you know, new facility, expanded facility, let me know, so...
And, and just, I mean, the only reason I'm asking the question is because, I mean, when I'm looking at an agreement between council members ranging from s- four to six, council members agreeing on priorities, the fire station falls at 15. It's far down the list. And the highest priority in, in our master strategic plan session is, believe it or not, the senior citizen center. I mean, we had five of us agree that that was the highest priority project. So, I, I'm wondering, how did we get the alignment from this priority list from what we talked about back last October?
You know, staff had PGAL take a third, you know, an external look, um, but the, the fire station, that's, that's definitely the answer we need to, to get from you tonight. It may not be the most exciting of things to replace a, an existing facility, but, um, I wouldn't feel right in, in, you know, Chief Spears could tell you, it's not acceptable for us to have a public facility that floods in a rain event. It's just not. So, uh, we don't have an easy fix, I don't think, and, um, yeah, that's where we're at.
And it wasn't part of, and I don't wanna, I mean, interrupt you, wasn't part of it before, we thought the fire station might be salvageable? We didn't have all the answers? Wasn't that what we were looking at a year ago, roughly?
Yeah, I think there was a study maybe a year, a year ago, it was before my time, that Kimley Horn did, that kind of offered some interim fixes. Um, you know, if you wanna patch the facility, we can, but wouldn't feel good recommending to you, based on the architect's review, to go on as is. Um, so, that's where we're at.
I just think we have some other priorities. I'm not trying to belittle the fire department or anything, 'cause they're one of our, they're our public safety, but I think that that could go on hold for a little bit. Maybe we can find another way to do the bedroom or wherever they live in, switch into the fire department or something for a couple of years, but I think that's just...
Is it okay if I say something? So, the fire station, in my opinion, is not a, not a put-off item. We've got guys, I mean, we're literally gonna lose some people over the issue if we don't address the flooding. There's not an easy fix to do that. Uh, certainly, we can Band-Aid that, but the building's still gonna flood. We've got mold that's built up in the walls now that we've kind of been putting off, waiting for a solution to fix that, that would need to be addressed. There's other issues in the building to, uh, that play into this decision that we might not have discussed, but we have items out in the bay that aren't supposed to be out there, uh, where the diesel fumes get to it. That's our breathing air compressor, our ice machine, and other things to take into consideration. So, to fix the issue to stay there, we're talking about a considerable amount of money, and when you weigh that out as to what the eventual plan is to be, that, that needs to be considered. So, just fixing the flooding issue now is not something that would remedy our situation. Could we move to the other side of the building? We could, we could do a lot of things, but we're asking the firemen to travel down that long hallway to get to the fire trucks. There's a lot of things to consider with that. So, pushing the fire station along is gonna cause us to lose some staff, quite frankly. It's got to a point where we've gotta do something to address it.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Cindy.
Um, I'm assuming that with the new facility, your EOC, your 911, everything would go over to that new facility? Is there a reason why we could not leave those particular departments and even possibly move the, um, police 911 department to that facility as well? 'Cause I know you have the training room that we could probably renovate, uh, to accommodate...
To say and move the, uh, fire station itself, but leave the other portion of the facilities?
I'm asking if that's a possibility, and then even convert the bay, 'cause that area doesn't flood, but you could convert the bay to a training room.
Though, the bay area does flood, so, uh, water does come in the bays and up through the drains and the floor and through the doors, so that, that area is prone to flooding as well.
And the kitchen area floods as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So, there's always a possibility of just moving the living quarters of the fire station away from the admin and leaving that, that, that's, that's certainly a consideration to do, too. It is ideal to have the entire fire station facilities in one place. Our EOC is drastically, uh, undersized. Uh, you know, we went through the training the other day, that plays an important role, so that's drastically undersized. We do have the dispatch center there that is a discussion, once we decide the path to take. Uh, there's not really room there to move the PD dispatch to that. I believe that was one of your statements, too, to...
Yeah, but you have that training room. I mean...
We could do that, moving a dispatch center's pretty involved, but that is a possibility, yes.
How big is fire?
You gotta remember, that building was built in 1974, it's been renovated many times, so just the age of the building, the parking area is under, is undersized, there's a many things to consider.
But, we have a responsibility to look at every possible...
Sure.
...solution, and, you know, we just need to get some answers and see what the possible...
Doug, how big is fire station number two?
Uh, it's about...
Square footage?
Uh, I think it's 10,000 square feet. Dolph may help me on that. It's somewhere around 10,000 square feet.
And it just houses the fire trucks and the sleeping quarters and, I don't, I've only been over there one time, so I don't know what all's in there.
It has the kitchen, a weight room, uh, very small meeting room, the apparatus bays, uh, storage for equipment and those type things.
Could we not build, like Cindy said, something like that somewhere else, smaller, and then utilize that one over there for the 911, EOC, and all the other over there?
Use the other fire station for that?
No, 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 the one that you're in now.
We certainly could, yes. The, uh, fire station that we would have to build over here would need to be bigger, 'cause we house more equipment and more trucks, our reserve trucks, and a lot more equipment at this fire station. So, it would be bigger than 10,000 square feet.
How, how much room would you need just for that?
You can see the breakdown of the various functions on that sheet.
Well, I can't hardly read it.
Kind of a detailed answer.
You can provide us a copy?
Y'all should've made it bigger if you wanted me to read it. I mean, I know you need a big conference room or whatever, but I'm sure there's another avenue that we could go down to save some money somewhere, because that's just a lot of money.
It is a lot of money. Public safety is a big in, investment.
It is a big issue, and I understand that, but I just think that our citizens are gonna be very upset over it.
And it's almost twice as much as what it was projected to us.
Yeah, yeah.
And, I'm sorry, but can, can you go back to the city hall renovation and that total project cost again? I may not have...
Sure.
...written it down accurately? And does, and that includes the library connection?
Yes.
Five minute, I don't know.
5.7, and that includes connecting the two buildings and doing the renovation inside of this facility and the library facility?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And what do you project the, uh, connection portion to be? 'Cause I can't read.
Um, we're projecting it at about 1,000 square feet at $400 a square foot, for 400,000 dollars.
So, half a million dollars.
Almost, yes, ma'am.
And, and just, just applying the same, uh, unit price and parametric, what was the square footage again for the, uh, senior center?
Um, the, the, I think it was around just over 14,000 square feet, 14.6, if it was standalone, that could probably be dropped to 12,000, 13,000 as a co-located facility once we really got into how, what, what functions could be omitted or shared with the recreational... once we really got into how, what, what functions could be omitted or shared with the recreation center.
Okay. So that runs that number somewhere around 10 million? For that facility, 14,000 square feet times 450, somewhere in that range? My math may be a little off.
No, it's probably close as a construction budget, yes sir.
So essentially, if we took goal one as fire station, we took goal two as, I guess we're saying library at this point, right?
That is what we had said, yes.
Okay. And then goal three as City Hall renovation at 5.8 million, and then Senior Citizens at 10 million. That's 32, 42, just under 50 million.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
In projects. What, I think our, our largest projects in terms of, and I'm segueing just a little bit, Gabe, into thinking bond program, okay? The number one item on everybody's hit list in this city is roadways. That is the number one item, is roadways. And now we're talking about capital improvement projects that are facilities. And, and obviously, there is a priority associated with those, the four that we've just discussed. But in roadway projects, we just talked about the Knowles Project being somewhere around 12, probably closer to 15 million, if I were to guess. Probably closer to 15 mil.
At least 12, yeah.
Yeah. And.
Yeah, if those numbers, if those numbers were done in the CIP a few years ago, there's no way they could have predicted this, this construction escalation we just saw in the last year.
I agree.
There's no way.
So, and then the McElroy Project, and if we looked at both, East and West McElroy, I mean, that's a gigantic chunk of change, especially East McElroy. So, just roughly, where, where do you think those numbers land right now? East McElroy and West McElroy?
We will bring a contract to you within the next couple of months to do some reconstruction of sections of East McElroy to use our street maintenance funds to the tune of about, was about 900,000 or so?
We have about a million dollars in street maintenance funds that we can use for McElroy. And the intent is, from the east boundary of Mariposa to 156, to actually reconstruct that segment. The first phase would be reconstruction of curb and gutter. And we'll be bringing an IPO soon to do a curb and gutter replacement. And then we'll do a full-depth reconstruction on McElroy within those limits, which is the worst segment. The segment that's further back to the east is, is in reasonably good shape. The intent then is, as we accumulate funds from street maintenance, in future years, we will just attack McElroy in four or $500,000 segments.
So that one, that side over there is like a million?
A million dollars from Levon, basically, to 156, which.
So, the, the reconstruction costs that, that show up in the CIP today, that's, it's Projects Four, Five and Six. One's 11, two, one is nine. So, I mean, we're setting now at 20 million, 26 million dollars for those three.
I think that's full reconstruction with concrete.
I want to, I wanted to clarify that, that, and I'm not sure where those estimates or how they were generated or what the assumptions were. What this project entails is to replace curb and gutter by contract, but then the, the actual asphalt and pavement reconstruction will be done with our county and our local programs. So, there'll be a cost savings there.
Okay, and that's, that appears to be project number five, maybe? It really doesn't appear here because project number four says McElroy Boulevard Phase Two, McElroy Phase Two Saginaw Boulevard to the S-Curve. And you're talking about taking it from the S-Curve to 156?
It's in the S-Curve, it's full reconstruction of Star Ray, Corray construction, the Mac, not.
Probably a concrete pavement section, be a concrete pavement section in the CIP. I mean, it, in a way, this is a stopgap measure, but it'll give us another 15 or 20-year life in McElroy. And to be able to defer that cost for, you know, many years out into the future.
Yeah, I'm just pointing out that it looks like the CIP, it does. It's, it's now project number 19. It's the last project in the list. And it's, it's projecting that a developer may, may build that out from the S-Curve to 156. So what we're talking about doing is Band-Aiding the S-Curve all the way to 156 until a developer picks it up?
I wouldn't call it a Band-Aid. But I mean, it's, it'll be a substantial street section. I mean, it's going to be nine or 10 inches of stabilized subgrade with nine inches of asphalt. So that's a pretty sturdy section.
Okay.
Particularly compared to what's out there today, which hasn't held up.
It hasn't been that long since that part of the road was resurfaced anyway.
That, if there was a Band-Aid, that was a Band-Aid. There was very little treatment done to the subgrade and so, I mean, it, it, it wasn't going to stand the test of time. So, this will be a much, much stouter, substantial pavement section, excuse me, pavement section.
And there's, you know, parts of West McElroy that need some pretty severe attention too, right on the corner of Saginaw Boulevard and McElroy.
And we could, I mean, again, if the council's pleasure would be to focus on certain areas over the areas that were identified, then certainly you've got that prerogative. But in our opinion, staff's opinion, one of the high priorities is from Mariposa back to 156.
And again, you know, if we're going to put a fire station over there, you know, I don't think this road is rated for the heavy traffic that we're looking at, you know, with, and no offense to what you're doing. I mean, I appreciate all your work, but, you know, the expansion that you're talking about for the municipal facilities is going to put a lot more stress on McElroy as well as traffic. It's one lane with a center turn lane.
Well, as you pointed out, all we need is money. But I mean, you know, so it's really a question of priority and what we're willing to spend.
So, so let me clarify that the Town Center concept would really make the McElroy corridor more pedestrian-friendly. The goal is to take vehicular traffic off and make it a destination, a meeting spot. So, to say that it would carry more traffic capacity, I don't think is, that's not our intent.
Well, and I still see the animal shelter needing priority over the Town Center. We need to expand that. That's just my personal opinion.
Yeah. Well, just, just in, I'm, I'm wanting to think about, we're going to finance this somehow or another.
Sure.
Whether it's buildings or whether it's roads or what, we'll have to finance it one way or another. And, and if it's, if we take the three as they set today, and we also add the City Hall, that's 50 million. The Knowles Project is around 15 million. And then the McElroy, if we do both east and west sides up to the point you're talking about, not including the S-Curve to 156, but from the S-Curve back to Main Street, crossing the railroad tracks, that's 25 million. You add all that up, it's 90 million.
What I, what I would recommend is that, you know, it's a matter of, we're not short on projects, as y'all have seen.
Right.
I, I think that priority one, from staff's perspective and most citizens would tell you is public safety, which is why the fire station would be what I feel needs to be addressed first. We have $10 million in existing bond capacity, which means $10 million of no tax rate impact within the next year or so. 20, right? Or 21? Right. So we have some debt rolling off to the tune of 10 million capacity there.
In 2021?
In 2021. But then after that, you know, we're looking at tax rate implications, which I would recommend would be bond propositions.
I don't think anybody's saying we're going to do this all right now.
No, absolutely not.
We'll, we'll have to prioritize. We're not going to do a $100 million bond project.
You know, and.
Who's looking at that?
So we don't need to make decisions tonight, but if we're going to look at a November 19 election, I think we'd have to call it in about August. So really, we need some preliminary direction in the spring so that we can get prepared to bring that to voters to weigh in on in the fall.
So, we've just outlined roughly 90 million dollars worth of work between McElroy, Knowles and four building projects. So really, it's our job to determine how much we want to spend on roads, how much we want to spend on buildings, and in what, what order?
You know, we have an opportunity now to, to do some bond work. As you said, some rolling off, additional new bond work. The question is how much and what? And what's our priority? I don't think anybody wants to bite off the entire chunk right now. I don't think that would be even wise. We don't need to, based on the build-out. But we do need to start this. And I think that's what we need to discuss.
And this 90 million dollar potential that Patrick's talking about, that doesn't even begin to include the 50 million dollar bond we were talking about earlier, does it?
I don't recall a 50 million dollar bond.
Well, for parks and.
Oh yeah, that doesn't factor in. So, we approved a couple of months ago a parks assessment.
None of that's being discussed here.
Yeah, there's, there's, that's no park money. So we're just talking facilities, roadways, yeah.
So another 50 on top of that.
Val, speak up, Don.
I just think, I don't know, I just, I think the citizens are going to be real upset.
Thoughts, what, what's your thought?
I honestly think the library and the senior citizens should come first. I know public safety is the number one thing in Saginaw, and I get that. I honestly do. You know I support the Fire Department and the Police Department, but I just think a brand-new station at that much is, ooh, way out of, and that's not counting the land.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we could even get the land that we want.
I just think that maybe we can look at another way that we can do the Fire Department where it doesn't cost that much.
Just, I'm, I'm going to make a suggestion. And I, this is extremely valuable information to know what these facilities will cost us. But we have three buckets that we're juggling here. We have parks, we have streets, and we have buildings. And we have a finite amount of money. And we just need to determine what, what is that money? What is, what makes sense to us? I know that Lewis is working on that in, in long-range planning. But I, I think we need to get a look at what does that money look like? And what mix of those three areas do we want to attack? I really don't want to put facilities ahead of parks, ahead of streets. I think it should be a blend of all three. And in fairness to what Jeff and his group are doing, they're giving us a really good picture of what facilities look like. Kimley Horn is giving us, will be giving us a really good picture of what Knowles is going to look like. I think it's really important for us to, to get a grasp on what McElroy is really going to look like. And if we can drive to those knowns sooner than later, that gives us the knowns on the streets. It gives us the knowns on the facilities. The only unknown at that point is to what extent we want to work on our parks.
Well, and, and we've got a park assessment underway. Rick might speak to that.
Yes, last month, you approved an IPO for a park assessment of the seven city parks. That project launched last week, the study. They're going to evaluate existing parks and then come up with master plan concepts on each of those city parks. Intent is just to work that through the park board, and then at some point, to open that dialogue up to the public to get feedback on what the proposed park improvements might, might be. And then we'll have budgets that we could talk about for, for future bond consideration.
Can I just, I'm going to make a suggestion to the council. Knowing that we have those three areas that are in play, and we've got, this is, this is essentially a preliminary report, is that right? From a facilities perspective, this is kind of a.
In terms of the needs assessment, it's, I think it's, it's the final in terms of the data. It is an interim report in conjunction with, with City Management's office. We came to, to actually put some priorities in front of you to provoke, not provoke, wrong term, but to get you to discuss them, right?
Sure.
Isn't, isn't that the purpose, right? So, we, we have services left to work to implement the conceptual master plan. So if you tell us that this is headed in the wrong direction, or you want to do something different, there are other ideas that we've had. If you came back and said, library and senior center were your priority, we could discuss whether that means that's one facility, co-located library, senior center. It has been discussed. Or is it what we projected or proposed, that it's an addition to the rec center and then there is a library? And a lot of that will be predicated, obviously, on land issues and acquiring land, right? So our next step would be to take any, any renovations of any of these buildings that, that were part of our proposal and then actually kind of go inside and see what we could do. So right now, that would really just be this facility and that library to actually do some conceptual work to determine what is the scope of this. We could probably, we would do that, and that would give us a basis to get cost estimate done or something a little bit more accuracy on this facility. But if this isn't your priority at this point to do this, then, you know, it can or can't be done.
Well, what, what I'm suggesting at this point, though, is that we, obviously, the Senior Citizens Center, we would like to see the same level of detail that you've put into the other three areas as a, as an estimate.
Yeah.
And add that.
I can provide that in a day.
Sure, it's simple.
It's a spreadsheet.
Got it. So, those four facilities, if, if we see what the cost of those four facilities are, and you were to budget, say, three-year escalation on top of each one of them, giving us an understanding of what our risk is to put projects off and how much that's going to cost us because that has to factor into our long-term finance planning. The streets, I know you're not involved in that at all, but we're in the middle of, of developing and understanding of what those costs are.
Sure.
I think that we, I'm making the suggestion to the council, is that we have our facilities understanding here in the next couple of weeks made clear to us by PGAL. We have within two months, at least Knowles, have an understanding of what Knowles would cost. Hopefully, we could get a rough order magnitude of what McElroy would cost from the S-Curve, from the S-Curve West, not from the S-Curve East.
Excuse me, you want the full reconstruction as contemplated in the CIP from the S-Curve back to the.
Yeah, S-Curve back all the way to Old Decatur.
Because the other way to attack that is how we're attacking from the S-Curve back to the east is to use street maintenance money to, to try to extend the question of reconstructing McElroy to a full city standard.
Sure, we may still do that.
I mean, that's one approach.
Sure, sure. And, and what I'm, what I'm wanting to, I just want to get those buckets known so that the council can see all of them at the same time. And when do we expect the parks plan to be at a point where we could put some cost estimates to it?
I would say within a couple of months at the most.
So we have got to start putting a bond out to citizens sometime in late July, early August. So if, if we were going to call a bond election this year, 2019, we, we would need to be making those priority decisions in those three areas no later than early June.
Well, one thing we need is, we need the dollars. We need to say, if this bond, we've got the 10 million coming, but if we want to do 20 million more, whatever more, how much tax would that cost us? We'd need those, those figures as well. I know you have those. We can get those, that would be part of this equation.
And, and Mayor, I know you said that we don't want to take a, a big bite at one time, but let me tell you, when we're looking at postponing projects with escalations that exceed what we've seen in the last two years, 10% escalation in the construction industry, and we put that off for five years, we would be much better served securing that work and managing those bonds sooner than later because then we're going to be paying twice as much for the capital improvement than we would on the interest spent.
Then the folks would have the, the palate to swallow that at this time. Because you're talking about taxes increase.
Totally understood. I think we have to inform the public of what those costs and risks are.
Dolph, you have something?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say, speaking of escalation, one thing that is escalating here is the cost of land. And whether, once we know from this work that Jeff has done, how much land we need for these facilities, whether we build them now or later, council might consider funding, purchase of property for future facilities before that cost, one, before the land is unavailable, and two, before the cost goes up even more. So, that might be, that might be something that council should consider as well.
At least try to buy the land now.
Yeah, because that's one thing that was missing from this was land as well. We know that's a big number. Don't know what it is, but it's a big number.
That way it's at least secured.
I think with regard to the senior center, co-locating it with the library or the rec center makes a lot of sense from a parking standpoint. You could cut down on the size of the land that you would need, driveways and all of that. that. Because, again, its usage is primarily a morning and early afternoon, and then maybe one night a week or something at most, for most programming. So, that can work well with the library, it can work well with the rec center.
I got a question. Ellen, are you still back there? There you are. Could you come up there? I got a real quick library question for you. You know, where the library is right now, it's a great location. What would we lose if we moved from this location with the library?
Um, we're just really central right now, and we get a lot of walking traffic from just the residential areas around here. Of course, anywhere else that we moved, that might have that too, you know? So, it's hard to say, you know, what we'd lose leaving here and going somewhere else, because we don't know where we would be going. But where we are right now, we do get a lot of walking traffic from the...
Do we get additional traffic based on being so close to the rec center, so close to the city hall? Is that sort of the symbiosis I'm thinking about?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Especially in the summertime with... The library will bring citizens here who aren't just simply coming to go to court or pay a bill, right? So, they're coming for good reasons. And so, I think having them co-located along the McElroy corridor, as they are now, just makes a lot of sense to create kind of a central focus for the...
I don't think they should go too far from where they are now.
You know, there's a reason we put it here right now, and it seemed to work well, and that was sort of my question.
Yeah, you have a unique situation, because you've got so many city facilities just one right after the other, including the Aquatics and the rec center, and just all these facilities, and it's, it's, it's a, it does a lot of capital expenditure here, that adding other facilities to can really create a unique council and an opportunity that we don't really have in the city right now anywhere else.
And one other thing I'd like to contribute, and Ellen, you can speak to this, but you were talking about the hours of usage at the senior center. I know that Ellen has a group of, it's a sufficient group of people, probably, what, ten, fifteen, that meet on Tuesday and Thursday evenings, because the rec center is not available for them. And that's the only time that, you know, the seniors, and they actually get together with a lot of the youth as well, coordinate very well with them. And I'd like to see those senior hours expanded to accommodate these people, so they can, you know, take the best advantage of the senior citizen as possible.
Definitely. Are you talking about the crafting group?
Yes.
Yeah, and that has other ages in it too, but they are primarily seniors that kind of meet at the library for their...
But that's what I like. I like that bridging of the generations. Because they're training a new group of people.
Yeah.
So, I think, you know, the library and the senior citizen together is a great idea.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that, too. I think that would be a good mix. Separate is good, too, but I think that...
I think there's pros and cons of both, you know? The advantages of co-locating with the library, and please, you know, jump in, is the meeting rooms and some of the other spaces that you can share. The advantage with the rec center is shared fitness room. And the fitness center could probably be expanded at the rec center as it is, and so there's an opportunity to improve that, as you do the senior center, as well as some meeting rooms that are there for larger events that wouldn't have to be replicated in a new, in a senior center. So, both of them have synergy.
So, how much land would you need for the fire, for a fire department and the library? Just out of...
The library will command a lot of parking, and so you're probably looking at somewhere between five and six acres, depending on the shape of the land.
For both?
Together.
Yes, okay.
You were talking about on one side.
Yes, yes.
All right, so do we have, Gabe, do we have a plan?
You know, we may ask Jeff to examine the current fire station, to look at some remedy, because the current situation, it flooding, especially in the sleeping quarters, has to be corrected.
I view that, I view that as unacceptable. We've got to fix that.
Yeah.
This is unacceptable. We've let that go too long.
Yeah, maybe that's something PGAL could give us some options and...
We can look at it. Obviously, when we came on board, the litany of challenges was laid out to us in terms of the, almost the inability to really expand there because of so many restrictions, and then just all of the issues. Chief Spears mentioned mold. I wasn't even going to go there. So, they just, immediately, we just didn't think it made sense for the city to put money into that facility, and so we didn't.
But you know, even if we did it for a short time, maybe just a couple, five or six years longer, maybe, maybe not even five or six years. But you know, if we just do it for a short time, so that we can get some stuff done, because...
Understand, you have to establish the priorities, which, you know, take into consideration what the citizens want, and your job to protect them as well. So, I don't, I'm glad you're sitting there, and I'm not.
So, in reality, if we move the seniors over to the rec center, maybe you could do something on this side or something for a little bit, to help them out, you know? Get you a meeting room and whatever for, I don't know. I just think seventy...
It's a lot to swallow tonight. We've unloaded a lot of data on you and a lot of costs that you, you know, wouldn't have known necessarily was coming, so I understand. I don't think any of us were coming here necessarily expecting a, that you said, yeah, do that, you know? It sounds great.
Well, if we got a big piggy bank somewhere, we could do that.
We just wanted to bring you the data and the information for you to start chewing on it.
Yes. And I appreciate that.
I think that we looked at the fire station as something that's critical, it has to be resolved. And in our mind, putting money into the existing facility, when that land has a higher, better use for the economic development of the city, it didn't make much sense.
Well, I understand that, but then they're still gonna have to fix the fire department if we use, do use the building for something else. It's still gotta be fixed regardless, is it not?
I don't, yeah, I don't know. I would disagree. If it's not city use, I don't think that building will be there very long.
Yeah. I think the suggestion there is to sell the building, and then take the proceeds, and flip that into new property. So, because it's more valuable where it's located as a commercial facility than it is a municipal facility.
I understand.
And it's more dangerous to operate as a municipal facility as it is today, according to Chief Spears, and entering the roadway with the siren blowing. But, you know, just to, in my mind, what I see is first meeting June, we have probable cost estimates in the three critical areas of decision, parks, roads, buildings. And we just put it on ourselves as a body to prioritize those three areas. But what I would ask staff is, please, put together the pros and cons associated with suffering through escalation and putting projects off, and what it would cost us long-term, say, over a ten-year plan, versus going ahead and capturing the bond, paying the interest, and where there may or may not be savings between the two. Does that make sense, what I'm suggesting there? Okay.
I'd like to also have them consider some alternate options than what we were given today with that as well.
Such as?
Well, again, you know, like removing the nine-one-one and the EOC, separating that from the actual new facility itself.
Shrinking the footprint of the new fire station, is essentially what you're saying.
Right. You know, maybe we could move...
We did not have dispatch in the new fire station. And the square footage we're giving you did not include dispatch. The assumption was it would not be part of the future.
Oh, well, we couldn't see that on it. Where was dispatch gonna go?
That's some discussion we would have when we get some direction as to what we're gonna do. There's a lot at play with the dispatch center, and there's a few options to consider, but that's a bigger discussion than happening here in the council meeting.
So, what was that building, the new central fire building? It's just to house the trucks, training room, quarters for the guys?
The living quarters, admin, EOC, training room, apparatus base, that makes...
It's a central station, so it includes the central command and not, it's not just like facilities two, it's a substation. So, it does have the central administrative functions in that, in addition to the station. And it's a five-bay, five-bay station.
All right, Gabe, so do you have direction? Do we have a plan? Okay. So, what, this also will include some bond information as well, data on what the bonds would cost? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Jeff, thank you.
A lot of information. Thank you very much, sir.
Moving on to item number eight is, we've already started, fiscal year twenty budget kickoff. City manager.
I was a little disappointed to hear you gave my job to Bren when I was out of the country, so...
Were you watching?
I tried, but the meeting was over in ten minutes, so, thanks a lot, Mayor.
Bren, fine job.
That's a new town, yeah. New city manager, efficient.
Bren told some really good farm stories and stuff, so, yeah, it was excellent.
David even chimed in.
Well, I think in my long flight, I watched some videos on the plane. So, I watched Braveheart, not once but twice. So, I think my truisms will be from Mel Gibson in the coming year. So, just, you can take my life, but you can't take my freedom. Just want to kick things off. The goal tonight is to, again, throw a lot of information at you. You will hear from each department, and our efforts, about a year, last year, we did the very same thing, just to generally talk about our budget, some, some things that may be needs and wants and everything in between. I will soon pass it off to Kim, but this is preaching to the choir. As you know, we don't have one budget, we have ten different budgets by fund. They each have their own sources and uses, and we fund recurring expenditures with recurring revenues. So, you know this, but for the folks at home, just want to recognize that point. Want to bring up a graph that is helpful, I think people resonate with graphics, to remind people that of the tax bill, the city's portion is approximately eighteen percent. So, for city services, that works out to, on an average assessed value home, seven-hundred fifty-two dollars, which is about sixty-two dollars, sixty-three cents a month. And that's the breakdown by department. These are general fund services where everything goes. So, with that, I would like to pass it off to Kim.
At this point, all of these, all of these are just preliminary estimates. We get our first tad estimated value in April, so we don't even have the first number. Usually, April is not even that great, but we do get April estimates, May estimates, June estimates, and then they certify in July, and that's the value that we use when we set our tax rate. That's part of our budget process. Just based on information that we have from the past, and the fact that our values have been capped at ten percent, residential values over the past few years were actually higher than ten percent, so we'll have some catch-up to do, even though we know that the rate of increase is decreasing. In other words, the values are not increasing as fast as much as they have been in the past few years. So, just to give you an idea of what we may look at, and again, these are a lot of assumptions, these numbers will not be exactly what you see, but just assuming that we have a seven percent increase overall, so that would be residential, commercial, industrial, we would look at an effective tax rate of about forty-four cents. We're currently at forty-seven point one-eight cents. So, that is the tax rate that would generate the same amount of money on the same properties, plus some amount of improvements. We included about twenty million, is how I came up with the forty-four cents. But again, these numbers are just preliminary estimates, they will change. That's the one certainty of that I can tell you. Sales tax, and I'm going over these two, because these are the two primary funding sources in the general fund. Sales tax, currently, year-to-date, we're six point seven percent over last year's. This is a very volatile revenue source. It can change month-to-month. In fact, last year, fiscal year-to-date, we were high, too. But the last three months of last fiscal year, we saw three months where we were lower than the previous fiscal year. So, that just shows you, we don't know. But currently, it's looking very strong. Six point seven percent over last fiscal year-to-date is very strong. I can tell you, overall statewide, the twelve-month rolling average is still increasing, but it's increasing at a slower rate. So, all indications are that the economy is still very strong, but is slowing down. So, we try to keep all of those factors in mind when we're estimating sales tax revenue. It's volatile, it just is. We use a conservative approach, and that's why, because it's, nobody knows for certain. We can look at different models, we can look at what's happening in the, in our area. There's lots of things to look at, but no one knows for sure.
Have a few key issues that would be city-wide in scope. That is, you'll recall, our, one of our biggest recurring expenditures last year was increasing our retirement to seven percent in the TMRS system, which brings us in par with other cities in the area. The reality is, every business, and we're a service business, we're in competition for good and qualified people. Would recommend that we pursue a performance-based merit pool of three percent. We can't reasonably take a year off from salary adjustments and not feel the repercussions from that. We got kind of a free pass with our health insurance increases last year. I don't anticipate that lightning will strike twice. My goal would be that health insurance increases are absorbed by the city to the extent that we can. Again, we don't know what we'll be dealing with, but feel confident in telling you we'll have health insurance cost increase this year.
Well, Dolph's involved in that, right? So, we're probably gonna get a savings this year with Dolph involved in it.
I would not bet my doubt on that.
When do we know that?
We start the process in June, but we don't get the numbers till August, because the current carry is only required a certain number of days. There's a counter, they're only able to provide us a dollar amount for what it would be to re-up with them. They need all the time they can get to see the number of claims that come in, so they won't give us a renewal rate until, I think it's sixty or ninety days before the end of the contract. So, it's always a rush to get it done by budget time, but we start the process in June, the negotiations, and then we get the, we get the final numbers in August.
We'll probably have one workshop dedicated to compensation, where we can look at each department, because there's positions in each department that we need to look at every year, just as a matter of practice. Police, fire, and public works, our three biggest departments that have most of our employees, we certainly need to be market competitive. A couple of things I'd like to bring forward, which is pretty common in other cities, is a tuition reimbursement program, where we would pay for some amount of training or tuition for employees. And there'd be, you know, an agreement that those employees stay with us for some amount of time, otherwise, we were paid back what's invested. You know, other ways where we can't compete head-on with some other cities or organizations salary-wise, you know, like the South Lakes of the world, or North Richmond Hills, but I think that generally, people really like working in the city of Saginaw. So, across many departments, certification pay, and, again, on a case-by-case basis, employees that are interested in doing something more or different, that's a benefit to the department, we can look at and look at paying for. HR, Melanie will handle some HR things.
Good evening. I'm just asking for another electronic time clock for the aquatic center, so that we have fifty, fifty-plus employees that we will use that for. It'll be an easier process. And at the aquatic center, the connection's not well with the current one, so it's hard to read the card swappers. So, this would be an easier functionality of a card, without the card swappers for that. We're in the process now, I know last year, we came to you for a time clock for public services. We're in the test mode, so we should be starting that pretty soon. And then, see how that goes. And then, on, last year, when we looked at the process for adding the aquatic center seasonal employees and part-time employees, the price for each individual transaction for the cost of each employee was thirty, thirty dollars. And now, they have the opportunity to use it, twelve dollars per person for the part-time people and the aquatic center people for seasonal. So, that's gonna be a reduction. So, it's a lot less estimate this year than what it would have been last year for the part-time people. So, that's what I'm requesting on that. Have any questions? Okay. On the next... On the next slide, we have, we processed so far in October till now, we've processed 20 new hires. And we're fixing to hire 50 employees for the pool in the Aquatic Center. And doing the background and all the information to have to try to get their education and their certificates. You play phone tag, and it takes a really long time to do that. So I'm requesting to have a company do that for us. And the cost is, is, is pretty cheap considering the timeframe. And they've, they're based out of Houston, and they've been in business for 25 years. They'll help us on, on that part of it. Any questions?
What would that cost savings be?
Well, right now, it's just a matter of my time. And then like Mark Andrus will do some of them for the police department. So he goes out to each individual city and uses that time. So he'll do that, he'll still do that. But as far as the verification of other things, it would just be a lot. It's time consuming on me and on him.
And how many hours do you estimate that you spend on doing this?
I didn't do it.
Ballpark.
So.
You know, two hours per person.
Oh, I would say maybe five or six hours per person, because you're playing phone tag between wherever you're trying to get the background from.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, for the Fire Department. This budget year, this fiscal year, we added one shift firefighter to get, bring one shift up to nine-person staffing. That means we would have typically eight at the fire station, with one person being off about 95% of the year on shifts. Right now, our minimum staffing is at seven. We need to be at eight. So adding two additional positions and filling out the other position on each of the other two shifts gets us to that staffing that we're seeking. We are looking to replace four of our cardiac monitors, defibrillators, the big device, the EKG machines, defibrillator devices. We have five of those now. They're at their end of life, where they're not even, we can't even get a service contract put on them anymore, so they're in need to be replaced. Instead of replacing five of them, we're looking at replacing four of those and just adding an AED, which is a, just really an external defibrillator, not the monitoring part of it, your EKG reading. We're looking to add an emergency management coordinator. We're vastly behind in one area of our public safety, and that is in emergency management. And the only way we're going to face that deficiency is adding an individual with that specialty and that focus to get us at the level we need to be. The Fire Department is tasked with managing that emergency management. And a couple of y'all went through the training the other day and see how detailed that is. That the only way we're going to bridge that gap to where we need to be is adding an individual at some point in that position. So we're seeking that position. Knowing adding a position is costly. There's some other things in the Fire Department where we, we need additional staff. So we're looking at tasking that person with some other administrative duties in the Fire Department to lessen that load on particularly the Fire Chief and the other chief officers, so we can focus on what our, our primary objective should be. We manage the Tarrant County Fire Alarm Dispatch. That's got 16 personnel in it, eight full-time people. So I don't want to downplay the, the time that that takes for us to manage that and the services that provides the city at, at a pretty low cost when you compare what it takes to run the PD dispatch, how many personnel we have in there to manage that. So we're seeking that position to do a couple of different roles, not only emergency management, but tasking with some other things that we need addressed.
I'm sorry, Chief. Didn't we talk about sharing this with another municipality at one point? Anything come of that?
We ha, we, I'm sorry, were you going to speak, sir? We have addressed that. Last year, we haven't got to the point where we're having those discussions. We intend to entertain that again to see what their feeling is. We certainly would fare better if it was a position funded in our city just for the simple reason we would task that person to do some other things in the event of a pretty wide disaster, that being a weather disaster, which is the biggest hazard we face. That person would be stretched pretty thin to do. Two cities, is it, is it a manageable scenario? It certainly is, and it gets us better to where we are. The ideal scenario is for us to have our own person in that capacity that will have Saginaw as the number-one priority. But we are going to have some discussions of that to see if that's still a viable option. The next item on that is just to provide a vehicle for that, for that position, should it be funded. That person would have to have a vehicle to travel. There's a lot of meetings in the emergency management realm that we don't get to, just because we can't, we can't make those. We have to prioritize those. So that person would need to travel. There's quite a few meetings in the region for emergency management that that, that person would need to get to and certainly travel back and forth for disasters, weather monitoring, all that. So that requires a vehicle. We have one intersection left on Saginaw Boulevard that doesn't have the traffic preemption device. So we're seeking to add that device. That's at Palomino and Saginaw Boulevard. That current signal doesn't have a preemption device on it, so that would add that device to that location. And then the outdoor warning siren, that's been on the budget several times. We're seeking to replace one of the outdated sirens that we have that runs on 110-volt electricity. We have some deficient coverage in that area where that siren is located. In other words, there are some areas of the city that don't get any siren coverage whatsoever. That would fix that issue, replacing this one siren. The coverage of that siren is vastly small. New technology, a better siren, allows us to cover that area, and it runs off battery. So in the event we have a weather outage where we need to sound the sirens, electricity goes out, that siren doesn't work. So those are the, the primary items for the Fire Department.
So that, excuse me, Mayor, that just triggered something in my mind when we talked about that Palomino 287 intersection. I know that at one point in time, there was some discussion about that light not even being needed at this point. Because there's just, the way that development has fallen, we don't have a lot of exiting traffic from the old Diamonds Shopping Center and, you know.
From a public safety perspective, there's not a lot of cars that use it. But the cars that do use it, there is no way for them to get on Saginaw Boulevard without some kind of signaling device. You'll, you'll have traffic eventually sitting there cutting through the parking lot to get out of there. And I don't see how you have that intersection without a signal there of some kind. But it, it's, the amount of traffic it uses, it is minimal. That is correct.
Well, it's, and that segues into the other part of the thought that I'm having, is the, one of the top road projects in our priorities is synchronization of our traffic signals on 287 on Saginaw Boulevard. So I guess, you know, the number of traffic lights that we're having to synchronize along the way, I'm sure that that has something to do with the cost, the overall cost of the project. Because if, if we were missing one signal light, which I understand what you're saying, that folks on Palomino trying to get out of subdivision onto Main Street would have a hard time without a signal. But that's something that we haven't discussed yet. And that is the cost to synchronize those traffic signals along Main Street. So at some point, we need to be looking at that as well, since it is a very high priority. In fact, I think it's, it's one of the highest priorities in our master's, master's strategic plan. I'll get that right one of these days.
We did invest several thousand dollars, this has been years ago, to sync all of the lights on the Boulevard with, they put, I don't understand the technology. They put internal clocks of some type into each one of the signals. And that was the best available technology at the time. And so they worked great, except that every signal's tied to the train signal. So every time a train would come through, it would trip. And by the time they all got synced up again, there comes another train. So I'm not, I don't know, Dana's our expert here, if there's any better technology than what we did before. But because of the fact that we have so many trains coming through, and those signals have to be tied to the train movements.
I might add, I'm not, I'm not the expert, but we have had meetings with TaxDOT, of course, who controls the signals on the Boulevard. And, and the latest technology is, is a remote camera that would be operated or monitored by their transvision station there on McCart. Be able to tweak the signal operation and sequence remotely. And we've got estimates from TaxDOT. That's close to a million dollars. I believe there's eight signals on the Boulevard, if I count correctly. But, but again, it, it's money. So that would be programmed by TaxDOT. If we wanted to accelerate that, then it would be an advanced funding agreement, and would be our nickel. Or we could wait to two to three years for them to program it under their funds.
So just to put it in context, you know, we spent some time talking about Knowles Project today. Knowles is actually three on the list, and the traffic signal synchronization is number two on the list.
Well, I would add also, even with, even with current technology, because of the, because of the impact of train traffic, I mean, there, there's going to be disruption along the Boulevard. I'm, I'm not sure that that's a problem that we could ever solve totally. So just wanted to say that.
Okay. So there's, there's a long-term maintenance component to it, that you're having to constantly maintain it. And it's, you know, we, on our list, we have those nice little dollar signs next to each line item. And that, of course, carries the, the maximum of $4 signs next to it. So it tells us that that's going to be a very expensive project for us. But I just wanted to point out that that project is indeed above Knowles on our list.
And Chief, I know you talked about it, the emergency management training. But how many trains a day pass along, alongside the Boulevard?
Well, what we estimate and what the railroad reports is a little bit different. But we've counted as many as 70 trains through, through the city. I think their count is, is quite a bit lower, but. Yeah, I think 35 is.
And that's just the one line? That's not all four?
No, that's all, for us, counting up to 70 trains in a day, that's all three of the main lines that traverse the city.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one item related to IT. So you'll recall, we had a study last year to examine IT needs. The, one of the recommendations from that study is to get on a replacement schedule, not just fix things when they're completely broke. So we're due for a, a phone system upgrade citywide. That doesn't mean our phones are not going to work tomorrow. They're, they're still functional. They're just not serviced by the manufacturer.
Does that say 37, Gabe? We can't read.
Yeah, it's about $38,000 citywide. Thank you. So.
I know. I gave it a, it looks like 17.
Yeah, right. We'll put this online. I, I talked with Keith about creating a dedicated page on our website. We'll put all our presentations online going forward. Talked about this a little bit, but Rick will handle the.
Right. We already, we already talked a little bit about the park assessment that we award, that the council awarded last month. And again, that work is underway in the next probably two, two and a half months. Because we have two park board meetings that we want to bring it back before to, to review. So I said earlier, a couple of months, probably be closer to three months before we'll have a budget and a recommended plan there. But it has implications for future bond, obviously. Knowles Avenue, tonight, we awarded the, the contract to do the, the phase one and phase two analysis. And again, future bond issuance for that project. One of the things that you may not be aware of is we are ending the life of our meter, water meter system. That, that project, or those meters have always been provided to us through Badger. We use the Badger Orion Classic Transponder System. That's a remote system where we can read our meters without doing it the old-fashioned way, door-to-door. We actually receive the signal and download that. So those meters are being eliminated, at least the service to those meters is being eliminated. And so we're looking at, at migrating to a new system. Badger Orion has given us a, a proposal. There are two options under their system. They have a $2,500, let's say, a trial that we have launched. Where we're going to try out these new cellular, cellular meters. And so what the cellular meter does for us is it gives the customer, the client, the customer out in the field, some granularity in terms of being able to see what their water use is. You could actually download an app on their phone. If they're remote and they can see activity on their phone, they can get alerts. It can aid in leak detection and things of that nature. Those meters are actually cheaper by the unit than what we're paying currently. The problem is, is that there's a large capital expense for, you can see, a little over a million dollars. And we proposed that that would be a, a two-year phase-in if we decide to go with the Orion meter in the future. So we will be coming back to council after we monitor this trial program and with a specific recommendation. But just want to put that on the horizon. Badger's already told us at the end of two years in 2021 that there would be a 20% increase in the cost of these meters. So it is something that we would want to phase over a two-year period to avoid that increase.
Is the app free to the people after we pay for all the other?
The app has a $1.81 per month charge that's per, per customer. And so the city could absorb that cost in our rates for a while. At some point, we might want to pass that on to the customer. But again, that allows the customer to have access to a phone app or a computer app to, to monitor their system. And they can monitor their water usage down to the minute under this new. So we'll just drown them in data, right? Engineers love data, so.
What is the life of these new, new meters? Estimated life?
I don't know that, that there is a, a life. You know, 10 years, maybe. I'd have to go back and see what our, what our experience is with the Badger meter. The meter itself is not very expensive. The transponder and the, the meters are only about $30 per unit. But the transponder and the, and the meter are about $140, $150 a unit, so.
And how long did the, once we currently have, how long have they lasted?
And, and that's what I said. I'd have to go back and ask my operations superintendent what the average life is. But I would think 10, 10 years. I mean, there are anomalies where they may not last that long. You know, there may be something wrong with the meter.
I don't think they've changed my meter, and I've been in that house for 24 years.
Right, right. Of course, the, the more, the longer that a meter is in service, the, the less efficient it is in reading water usage. So, but, but you're right. I mean, a meter could last many, many years without replacement. And again, today's proposal is not to say that we would replace meters. It's really the transponder, the new system that would allow us to read those remotely, is what we're really talking about tonight. So meter replacement would probably be done through attrition as those meters go out of service, as they, as they fail or whatever.
Does that knock out a person's job, just out of curiosity, if we do all this remotely?
Today, we, we don't have daily or weekly reader, meter readers. I mean, it's all done remote. Now, sometimes customers will have a complaint about, you know, about their bill. And we'll go out and do a physical meter read, and that would still occur even under this new system.
I just didn't, we still had meter readers or?
No, no, we don't.
Well, what's the technology look like in the next three to five years?
I, I think that the, the app will probably be the way to go. I mean, today, we have a, a system that's supported by, by software that's downloaded and is serviced by Badger. Of course, an app is programmed also, so it's, it's essentially software. But, but there are two, there are two options that were on the table initially when we made this decision to do the trial. The other one is, is a comparable cost, but it would require building cell towers or, or some infrastructure to support that. So I mean, overall, the, the technology is wireless and, and remote reading. I mean, I think that's a, be.
But what's the life expectancy on the, the one that you opted out?
I, I don't know how long that we've been using the Badger meter. But that's the same problem that would, and probably maybe DOLFers or can, can weigh in there. I don't know how long we've had it. But this is a classic case of you're chasing technology. I mean, you know, you're, you're saving a lot of money because you're taking labor out of the equation, but you're paying for the technology, and so that has a cost, but.
I was just wondering if the other option had the capability of just sending all that water information directly to your facility without having to send somebody around to go take a reading?
I think that's more of a comfort level for the customer. I mean, I mean, some people maybe don't trust the technology, so they want a person to go out and physically read that meter. And that, and that doesn't occur very often. That's less than 1% of our, right. Because that's less of 1% of our customers probably that request that on a monthly basis. But yeah, all this, all this cellular data would go from the transponder to, to us. But yeah, all this, all this cellular data would go from the transponder to, to us, to the city remotely, just as it is today. But it would also be available, that data, to the customer, so.
I have a question about, uh, funding sources here. The water meters, would that fall under our proprietary funds? So, it would not fall under Public Works and, it'd fall under, under utility?
Right.
And, and I, the, the trucks just popped up here in front of me. So, would, would we separate the Public Works truck? It would be funded from Public Works under General Fund, and then the Water Department, two trucks would be funded under Enterprise Fund.
Mayor, I, I would just add to what Rick's talked about in terms of the meters. We had a representative of the manufacturer come out, not the salesman, but an actual software person, come explain all this to us. And it took them a good two hours to, to show us what, what we were, have now and what we could, could have. But we could easily get them to come talk to council, once we've gone through this trial period, and, and let them explain that to y'all. Not the, give you the Reader's Digest version, not the two hours.
Okay, that's our say, not two hours, please.
Yeah, well, let's see how the trial goes, and we'll work from there, so. Keep moving, Rick.
Uh, the final, uh, request from Public Works is three vehicles. Again, uh, two, uh, for the Water Department, one for Public Works. Heavy-duty trucks, two fifty or the Chevrolet equivalent for the, so that's about ninety-two thousand dollars.
Okay, so two items for economic development. One is fifteen thousand for replenishing the Building Improvement Grant Program Fund. Um, you'll see that in the mid-year budget adjustment come forward as a separate line item. But those funds were originally budgeted under Economic Development Incentives and were pulled out over into their own line. So, this request would just essentially make it its own recurring line, um, for the future. And then a twenty-five-thousand-dollar increase request for economic incentives. So, these go directly towards, uh, incentivizing businesses, bringing in new opportunities to the city to, uh, increase and diversify the tax base. And then these funds would build so that, over time, we would be able to have, uh, cash on hand for, for incentivizing good deals that come forward.
Laura, how much have we given out in the Building Improvement Grant Fund?
None. We're a couple of months in since you guys have, um, approved it. We got some good sort of media from the Star Telegram. They put out an article about it, which was very nice. And after that article, then I have been contacted by two, uh, local businesses that are, are hopefully in the process right now of filling out applications. So, I have met with both of the businesses and kind of gone through explaining it. And so, I feel fairly confident that before the end of this fiscal year, um, we can expect the initial fifteen thousand to be exhausted.
Thank you, Laura.
Chief.
The Police Department would like to request, uh, three additional personnel for next year. Two police officers and one public safety officer. The, uh, one of the public safety officers, uh, I'm sorry, one of the police officers and the public safety officer are in keeping with a five-year plan that we've had in place on personnel. Uh, the second police officer is a byproduct of the recent creation of the Assistant Chief position and a series of promotions that will occur after that, that we will finish up probably this May. The police, uh, vehicle replacements is in keeping with what we've been doing in terms of replacing portions of our fleet every year. We have four in this year's budget, and we're requesting three replacements next year.
Do we, I'm sorry, Chief, do we have a breakdown of what is in the CCPD and what is the?
Traditionally, the vehicles are replaced out of CCPD, and we anticipate that for next year as well.
On the, uh, body camera item, uh, our body camera program has been in place for a number of years. Uh, we've, uh, had many of those little units, uh, go down. So, we're asking to replace fifteen of those. Right now, we do not have any spares, and the ones that we have in service still are, are rotating constantly in service from shift to shift. We have a three-year contract that's been in place with, uh, the Tarrant County College for the use of their firing range. Um, that will come up for renewal next year. And the cost of that, a three-year increment in that contract's twenty-two thousand dollars. And I can tell you, that's a, that's a bargain considering what we get and what the cost of having or maintaining our own range or going some of the other places that we would have to pick from. That gives us two full weeks of training and then one day a month of use of that range. And then, uh, the patrol rifle item was, uh, something that, uh, was asked for last year. We're bringing that back again. Just allows us to, uh, have department-owned weapons and replace some of the ones that we're utilizing that are personally owned by the officers. And then the final item down there, uh, I would like to, to explore the possibility of a new records management and commuter-assisted, computer-assisted dispatch software. And, uh, that's something that the cost could vary considerably depending on what option we were, we had available to us. But we'd like to start exploring those options in, in this coming year. And it's something that I just put on here to kinda keep on the forefront of your attention.
Any questions for Chief Al? Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, Community Services is gonna be broken into two separate little, um, not little, but two separate, um, services. One is Community Services that we're, I'm calling that, is Recreation, Aquatics, Senior and such. And the other is Animal Services, and I'll do that right after this. In Community Services, the things we're, we're asking for are, the first three on that list right there are, are maintenance issues. The first being the six treadmills. They cost, we're, we're looking at commercial grade. We're a commercial, basically, organization, uh, and, and the, the usage that they get, they're used from six in the morning till nine o'clock at night, five days a week, eight to four on Saturday. They're used every day, all the times, you know, January, February, and half of March. They're, it's non-stop. That's the whole New Year's, working off the New, New Year's resolution thing. But they get used constantly, and, and they wear down. Uh, we, a few years ago, we replaced all of our, uh, exercise bikes, the recumbents, the upright bikes. Last year, we replaced the ellipticals. A few years before that, we did replace two treadmills, two of our, our problem treadmills. Uh, but the other six have reached their life expectancy of, of five to six years. And, uh, our, our maintenance and, and taking care of those, uh, it's exceeding our, our, our line item in that amount because they're, that, they've, they've reached their, their, their age in that. So, we're requesting a replacement of six, um, treadmills. Next is, is actually a, a state, uh, Health Department mandate is that we have an ADA chairlift at the Aquatic Center to be able to lift people in and out of the pool. The ADA lift, the chairlift that we have right now is the original, it's eleven years old. The thing with the chairlifts is that they can't be, they have to be onsite at all time, which means they're exposed to, uh, to weather three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Uh, the problem we're having with the current one we have now is it's broken, uh, they don't make parts for it, and they don't make batteries for it. Uh, so it's, uh, that's a request, uh, one-time cost. Uh, the last one, again, lasted about eleven years. Uh, the next is the, uh, replacing the multipurpose room dividers. At the, at the rec center, we have the four rooms, but there's three dividers. And they're kind of a modular-type divider, uh, that's, um, there's three of them. And they're in sections of about, uh, five or six feet and then however tall, uh, nine foot, about nine foot tall. Each one maneuvers out there on kind of a, a roller wheel system at the top. They're the original ones. They're made of, um, aluminum and, uh, I almost said fiberglass, and that's not right. Um, help me. Sheet rock. Sheet rock. And, um, over time, they're the original ones, they've been there fifteen years. Uh, they're, they're getting constantly being moved, opened and closed, depending on the, the room space and the room need. Uh, they're open and closed every single day, including Sundays, uh, which is the day that we rent, we rent out the facility right now. To replace those original fifteen-year-old dividers is, is about fifty, fifty thousand dollars. Commercial timeout.
Just can't hear him, no.
Chief Spirits, would you like to sing right now? Okay. And now, back to your regular programming. The fourth item is increased funding for special events and concert series. It's been a very popular item. We had it several years ago, it did really well. It just, it stopped, but we brought it back, uh, last year, and this is our second year to do it. It's very popular, two, three hundred plus people that are attending. We have four performances this year, including one that actually goes into next fiscal year in December. Uh, but we're looking at, um, increasing that, uh, you can, depending on the talent that you get, you, on average, it's about fifteen hundred per, and that includes all the advertising, marketing and such in hiring the, the groups. But on average, it's about that much. The, the higher-quality groups, uh, like the Me and My Monkey type bands, um, they do, they do have a little bit higher price tag. But, uh, to increase that, the concert series and events, um, that is one of our requests. The next, uh, two requests are staffing-related. Uh, one is, uh, the first one is the customer ser, taking a part-time customer service associate at the rec center that works, uh, afternoons, like about eleven o'clock to four o'clock, and making that into a full-time position where they would have, um, some supervisory ability over the evening staff. Uh, currently, our, most of our evening staff are college-age kids. And this provides some supervise, supervision for them and gives us some flexibility with scheduling. Uh, the final one on that page is, uh, increasing our part-time, uh, ability, uh, for our part-time staff at the rec center. Currently, they're, they're budgeted at twenty hours a week. We're requesting it to be increased to twenty-nine hours a week. They're not all going to be at twenty-nine hours. But if, if we have somebody that, um, is sick or ill and we need to have coverage, we can't call someone in to come in and, and cover for them because we don't have the hours to be able to do this. And this just gives us some scheduling flexibility. So, full-time staff is not having to come in and work in the evenings just to, to cover the staff. The next part of, uh, Community Services is Animal Services. Animal Services was moved into the, my department February first, two thousand eighteen, and is doing very, quite well. The three requests we have there, the first one is, um, adding a full-time customer service associate, also known as a, I like using that terminology better than Animal Services Technician, but that's what it's labeled as, is a Animal Services Technician. We, as you know, the last several years, we're putting in a lot of new home starts. Uh, we have probably another three, four hundred, or I don't know the exact number, but that are gonna be coming in. I will say, most of those new homes are bringing animals with them. Some cases, if you're like me, where I have two cats and three dogs, some people are bringing in multiple animals, which increases our, our workload, uh, with, with the staff that we have. Uh, this would help, this, help our staff, help customer service-wise, being able to, the, the current staff that we have there spend a lot of time cleaning, taking care of the animals, and trying to manage the front at the same time. We have a full-time, uh, our, most of our officers are out in the field, our officers are out in the field. Uh, we have a full-time Animal Services Technician that kind of bounces back and forth between taking care of animals, helping with adoptions, answering phones and such. And then we have a part-time employee, uh, that does the same, same thing. Second thing is adding body and vehi, vehicle cameras for officer safety. Uh, same type of situat, well, not same, but similar type of situation as with our police officers. It's for our, our, our officer's safety, uh, when dealing with, um, aggressive animals, when dealing with friendly animals and with, and with dealing with the, working with the public. And finally, the, the last one is, is, is more of a maintenance. Uh, it's, it's adding some additional, or really replacing the, the center aisle cages, uh, that we have. The cages that are there, they're stacked of, I believe it's twelve, but they're very small cages that'll only accommodate very small animals. Most of the animals, animals that we get are medium to large animals that come in there. Um, they are stacked in that we have six on the bottom, six on the top, but the top ones have drainage issues. And this would be replacing those with, um, one, I think we're replacing it with, I believe it's six, um, cages in that, in that place of, of the ones that we have right now. The existing cages, the stacked ones, we can move back to, um, cat quarantine, use one level. Uh, because we currently operate out of three buildings. We have the, the main building, when you walk up, that's the building everyone sees. But back behind, we have the original, or actually, it's the second, uh, our original Animal Services two-point-oh, I guess, um, that we use for dog quarantine, um, the pet grooming and intake for dogs. Uh, we have a third storage building, which we actually use for, uh, the, uh, cat quarantine. And we would try and move this ca, these existing cages back in there, which would give us some additional storage for the top level, and the bottom would be, uh, for animals. Do you have any questions?
Um, I don't know for sure who would know the answer, but does anyone know if we have an ordinance limiting the amount of pets that a household can have?
Yes.
What, what is it?
I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it is three dogs, um, two cats, and you can have as many as three chickens.
Oh, yes. No, we won't forget about the chickens.
The chickens are a new add to the city.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Keith.
Ellen has ten slides to finish. No, I'm just kidding, this is the last one.
And there's actually nothing on mine, they said I was making them look bad. It's really just that we don't have space to increase our programs, increase our collection, and there aren't really any improvements to the building that makes sense, um, because of how crowded everything is and how much, uh, you know, how, how small it is. So, um, we're doing really well, I don't want you to think we're not, um, and we, we do the best with what we have. And this isn't to say we wouldn't be asking for increases in individual line items because we will need more money for supplies and, and books and stuff like that. So, yeah, we're just really limited. So, what I really want is a new building. But that's not on the slide.
We're working on that.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I do have one question, and I know you do so much good for the community and the surrounding areas. You know, it's just phenomenal, and we appreciate everything that you're doing. But it's my understanding, and I could be completely wrong, that, uh, people that live outside of the city of Saginaw don't pay for a lot of the services that the library provides?
Um, there, uh, there are a few shades to that. We do have, uh, currently, a fifteen-dollar non-resident fee. But due to the, um, some programs through the State Library and stuff, there are, there are ways for them to get free library cards. What you can do is go to your home library for a lot of our surrounding residents, that's Fort Worth, and, um, and get a Tech Share card, which is a State Library program that allows you to, um, use other libraries as well. And I see that as a, as a benefit to our, our community as a whole. I think it's not, um, I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I think if you, um, if you look at the area, because we're so landlocked and we're so, you know, we're so close to our neighbors, it's, um, just, just a street away in a lot of cases. It, it improves the, the area as a whole if, you know, if we can get those literacy programs and the, um, the different services and stuff to everybody that's, you know, that's here. Um, it also, uh, you know, brings people into the city to spend money in our stores. So, you know, there, there are a lot of benefits to, uh, to having the, those outlying neighbors be able to use our library as well. Um, so, yeah, the, the short answer is, they do pay, but there are ways to, you know, to get in that. And, and for a lot of our neighbors, that's, you know, that's something that they need help with. Um, even fifteen dollars a year is, is too much for some of them, so.
Right.
It's, um, I, I see that as a positive.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Other questions, Ellen? Thank you very much. Gabe?
Yeah, nothing further to add. We intend to come back with you and have workshops at least once a month until we get to the summer months where we have to make some decisions. Want to repeat the disclaimer. These numbers will change as we get more information, and we'll, we'll continue talking about it.
And you said these will be put online so we can have access to them, these slides?
Yeah, so, we're gonna, Keith is gonna put, kind of, uh, we'll create a webpage off our main webpage where we're, we'll put all, all our workshop materials. We posted that online last year so that everybody can kind of see each presentation. And we'll, yeah, we'll entertain questions and follow up as it, as it comes up.
Okay, great. And it's a good kickoff. Thank you for the department heads. Thank you, Gabe. I encourage the council, if you have questions for the staff or Gabe, to start asking them now, just to work through this. I think this is a great way to look at this. I know it's late tonight, and I appreciate everybody's patience, but it's a good start, so.
I did have one, one follow-up, and it's back on the economic incentive, the twenty-five thousand. Would it be possible for us to put together some kind of policy for the distribution of those funds? I mean, I, I don't know that I would want it to just be pocket change, to be doled out at whatever.
So, the council was brought forward an economic development incentive policy, an application that was approved by resolution just shortly after I began. And in that document, it outlines exactly how incentives are dispersed here at the city level.
Okay, so an application would have to be filed?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's a tracking mechanism?
And it outlines it in that policy.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. All right, so, and at eight eleven, we convene back and do regular session. Then at eight twelve, we're gonna convene an executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five five one dot zero eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We will return to adjourn.
...
So, you come here and what that actual funding is, it works. So, if we develop a change more, I see that all of our people can keep.
Yeah, this is the problem.
Right. Right. See, the property owners, you have to drive their building. Bring it to. To someone or two. Then that could be as far as it starts to go.
I hope all of them, yeah, that's what you're saying.
It's not wrong.
So, I'm gonna turn her on.
All right. See you guys.
Okay, so you don't go sleep over for your house.
Oh, I don't. I should. Why, it's calm, it's a year back and forth.
We just have to get that discussion. We need to have some stickers.
Is that the question? There's a clear, clear running, that happened. You're testing the, you have one of the running.
Not yes.
You should. Really?
Grab my mic.
Can we spot you in here?
Just to. To your service, for your calendar, so that you know.
I'm busy here.
And that's. You changed it.
Yeah.
It's not a risk. And we hold that actually on. So.
We'll see.
Now, she, I think she would expect, see, something come up. Motion, protect them. That need to. Uh, that, that all means, you know, she would have, uh. And, and, uh. President, I mean, we need to say. Superb.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, correct.
Uh. We just have to.
Yeah, it's good.
You were. Yeah, she, she probably, she probably.
I think that we did it better than this here. And all of them.
How we, how we, her, that she probably got a. You know, they were just about, now.
Why not?
They, maybe on that, so they kind of, well, they can sort of.
What? That was waiting. Everybody left us. That is dedication.
Who is dedication?
Last training staff.
Eight thirty-eight, we reconvene back into regular session. Uh, item number, I don't even know what the number is.
Eleven.
Uh, item number eleven is adjourned.
I make a ma- motion to adjourn.
Valerie, Charlie second, all those in favor? Eight thirty-eight, we're adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.